...meeting of the county commission order? Stand up and let's believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion, we have a second. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Who cares? Bills. The ordinary.
The highway bills, we have some money we have to repay back to FEMA. I don't know if you want to step the motion on that.
What do we pay them for?
It's funny that they overpaid us. They're finding all our errors now.
Well, once once they give it to us, we can keep it forever, right?
Yeah.
I like that theory.
We earned a little interest out of them, didn't we?
That was coming from the 2011 disaster.
Yes, it did, yeah.
So does that close that one out then?
Yeah, well, thirteen is still open.
Now we can, you want to handle that in that studio a moment? We can talk.
It's waiting on the highway.
We can tell him, okay.
Move to approve the other question.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the bills as we get to it. Further discussion of questions. Seeing none, we will call, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Nothing out of the ordinary yet, did it? Just some numbers are kind of goofy because of one-time payments and things like that, insurance and stuff coming around.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the financial reports. Further discussion. Seeing none, we will call again, please.
Britt.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Treasurers' checks.
Move to approve.
Second. Six to one, pick 'em. We got a motion in a second to approve the treasurer's treasures' checks. Further discussion.
Just one question. I don't really can answer why can't we refund them taxes? Refund them taxes? I mean, why are they so miserable?
I think, I don't know, can I take a snap at it? If I remember correctly, I'm talking with Lisa previously, it's at the year end, so when when they when the banks roll in, roll in the property taxes into the mortgage, sometimes they'll 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 overpay slightly, so then we have to refund back because they don't know exactly what the property taxes are going to be. They they just.
Some of them are quite sizable.
Yeah. They make an assumption when they roll it into the mortgage, I believe, and then if it's under that, then we have to refund.
Then what, interest rate they're using?
That's my assumption, though. I can't say that for certain.
Makes sense, yeah.
Further discussion of questions. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. We will call again.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't have a vote.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. That's it. Approval of the agenda, the only thing we have to add is we have to approve a homestead credit. So we put that as your new business?
I'd also like to add, Bethany Hart, airport manager and essential air service support.
Okay, where do you want to put? Do you have any place to go?
I can say.
Okay, we'll put you in before our cabinet. Is that okay with you, Kevin?
No.
Okay. Okay, better than that, okay.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Sarah, good morning.
Did you want to first?
I don't care. Sarah asked me to come down and talk about Roundup. Roundup was a huge success this year. First day, the chamber had prepared for six hundred, and they didn't have fifty plates left. And we'd normally think of about a quarter of the folks going elsewhere for dinner. So thanks for letting us use the facility again and everything that happened to it. It was it was by far the biggest crowd we ever had. And of course, we had some, A Commissioner Laurie come speak and a couple others, so it was it turned out to be a really good deal. So thanks for letting us have that happen. I did get approached by Brad Barth, is that his name?
Yeah.
About they're considering putting up a building someplace for reading rooms. And just so you're aware, what he told me is one of the things they talked about was the parking lot out east here. And I said, right now, us as extension can't afford to rent facilities, and we have this one that our commissioner graciously lets us use. So I have no idea what they got going. I don't know. But I know that he quoted me about that, and we spoke to me for just what I have an order. I have things to do.
Thanks for forewarning us.
Didn't I? Yeah. It's funny, because the following Monday, I actually saw him out there walking around.
He was just walking to his car, wasn't he?
But.
I guess Brad was just a bit volatile.
Yeah, I didn't mean that as a warning or anything, right? I were spilling beans or nothing. I'm just, he talked to me, and that was the conversation we had.
I guess it was a very big building. As long as we can continue to make it work in the Memorial Building, I think we're glad enough.
Well, for us, it's.
Probably all we lost.
I think it works pretty well, too, because then if a couple of them get your flu shot, you haven't got any.
It works so well for us because if you do steps, you know, we're sixty to a hundred steps away from the next meeting, or it's not that far. We oftentimes have equipment that goes down, or we need something printed, and everything is just so convenient for us here. The college has tried for years to get us to come up there, but the location of things just wouldn't be convenient. So we, as extension, really do appreciate the ability that you allow us to have that here. So thank you.
There's many courthouse in North Dakota that have another building attached to it.
Yeah.
This one.
Yeah.
I don't know of another one.
I don't either. So thank you.
Okay, and I just have a few more things. Just wanted to give you a little update on 4H. Going strong, we we're still getting more people asking to join 4H, so we're we actually just got one more leader, thankfully, so we have another another club. And we're getting a lot of our summer camps going right still. Bill's going to be doing a fishing camp with the kids, and then we've also got another six more that we've added. So we're going to try to keep those kids busy throughout the summer. We're already talking achievement days. So we've also got a field to fork event coming up in April that we'll be utilizing the memorial building for. And that's the area of fourth graders. That's a multi-county event. And we're going to be teaching the fourth graders about where their food comes from, from field to the fork. So it's a great event, and we should have over three hundred kiddos here throughout the day, so we're really excited about that. And we've got a diabetes prevention program starting next week. We're really trying to hit hard on trying to get a few more numbers. It's a free program to anybody that is prediabetic or has any risk factors for diabetes. So we'll do that. Get that going as well.
Sarah, is that field of fork that isn't replacing pizza day, is it?
It is replacing pizza day, yes. It's a little bit different. It's kind of the same thing, but just a little bit more.
Because I know that was kind of the direction that field or pizza day was.
Yep.
What all where all the ingredients to make your favorite food.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And now we've kind of expanded it a little bit to add on. Got a little like a soil towel from NRCS coming and teaching about pollinators and so. Got a lot of a lot of good stuff.
What day was that going to be?
April second. It's a Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah, yeah. We welcome anybody to come, anybody who wants to help. Always looking for help, too.
If you come along, we'll give you a free cell.
Yes, and we need to talk to you about that.
Absolutely, happy to do it.
Anything else?
I might add, we are seriously elected for 4H leaders.
Oh, we are.
Our numbers have grown so much, just so much, that we could we could use some help. So if you know anybody that could be interested, please have them call.
I hope you wanted to talk about the shooting sport program.
Yeah, I was going to add. The other thing is, is we do have a team going to Nationals this year. It's a bunch of young ladies going down with shotgun. Quite cool to see that. That usually isn't quite normal. Usually it's either a mix of both male and female or just males. So having a total female group going this year, they're they're going to be okay. They're going to represent Ramsey quite well. They're doing fundraising and all get us there, and that will be the same time as our achievement days around the twenty-fifth of June, about that time.
When do they go to Nationals?
That's where it is.
Well, it is it is around that time.
Yeah, I don't just bring the exact dates, but it's like the twenty-fourth through the twenty-ninth or something. Down in Grand Island, Nebraska.
Little Nebraska.
Yeah.
What they're doing for fundraising is selling calendars with prizes for each day. And they run from the first of March to the thirty of April for the prizes.
Yeah.
And they're twenty dollars a ticket and pretty pretty good prizes, cash prizes on each day.
I don't know where. Each ticket's not.
And I don't mean to take your time, but I've been getting a ton of phone calls from media about what we think the cropping situation is going to look like this. And like I tell all of them, we don't know, you know, we don't know what Mother Nature's going to bring us. But I will say that I told the media the same. Our producers have a great way of being resilient, and it's happened before. We combine our crop in the spring, and we still get the crop there. It just adds a lot more work and stress to it. But, you know, of course, depending on moisture amounts, that could change, but we're good about getting that done, so we'll see.
You always said don't get excited in ours, right?
Yeah. What we do, we've got a great group of resilient producers in our state, and they'll get it done. And it's not just here, it's everywhere.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Right, thanks. Let's go.
Come on in. Is going to discuss the personal position or are you in the recommendation? Jeff, you want to take it or?
Sure can. We met as a committee on Friday, interviewed three candidates, and myself and Luca representing Ramsey County. We had Commissioner Griffin from Benson County and Commissioner Clefted from Nelson County. And we had three very qualified, very good candidates interview for this position. And I think we came down afterwards and as a committee and made a recommendation to hire their top scorer, if you would. We had a score sheet that with questions and kind of different things like that that we went through and scored each candidate. And the top scorer was Mr. Bryce Crosby from here in Devils Lake.
Okay. So was the job offered yet?
No, it hasn't been offered yet. It was a smoke of the board for approval to offer.
Okay.
I think each commission was going to take it up at their meetings this week for they're accepting the committee's recommendation of Mr. Crosby and.
And if we approve it, we will accept the offer, in other words.
Right.
Okay.
I believe that's how it was scheduled to go, correct, Crystal?
Is where the salary that we agreed on as a committee, if you remind me where that was?
The top end of the salary to do his experience, and that was three thousand six hundred thirty-six per month.
Three what?
Three thousand six hundred thirty-six.
I guess I wish that we include that because otherwise I thought the three counties might come to three different answers.
Yeah, I have clarity on what the page is going to be. Okay, any discussion on this? On the motion?
Oh, you want to do this? You want a motion?
I guess we need a motion to extend the offer contingent on, I suppose, the other counties approving it as well. Correct.
Yeah, and his background check and reference checks have been done.
Okay.
Done.
Yep.
So just a matter of all three counties getting on the same page that we're okay with extending an offer then.
Right.
So we would need a motion and accordingly.
Please, I'd make that motion to extend an offer based upon committee recommendations to Mr. Bryce Crosby.
Okay, the motion we have.
Second.
We have a second. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll hopefully get the other two counties on board. We can get an offer up there. You have anything else, Crystal?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you.
That'll rule us ready for Stacy.
Yep, we're still busy, even though I'm leaving. The month of January, I had totaled up a hundred on-the-nose veterans that showed up for services this past month. In the last two weeks, we're extremely busy. Even though we had the interviews last Friday, I had nineteen people come in Friday afternoon looking for services. So it still tells us that we're doing the job and getting a lot of people interested. Now I got people coming in wondering how many days I got left, fifty-one and thirty-six working days.
Nineteen.
Pardon?
Nineteen.
Nineteen Friday afternoon, after we did the whole morning with interviews. I mean, that just.
You got free pie or something or whatever?
See, if I did that, then I'd only have one or two come in because they all hang out and that was always the question, why don't I have coffee in the office? Well, if I did that, I'd only have a couple people coming in, and they drink all the coffee. So we're it's still staying busy. One thing that's comes up this past month now, I've finally gotten two of the Blue Water Navy veterans have been called in for their appointments. So that's starting to roll in. And then in the month of February, we hope Congress is going to add four more diseases for Agent Orange for the Vietnam era veterans. And one of those issues is hypertension or high blood pressure, which at one time was an issue that was granted disability. They took it off in 2010, and now they're going to put it back on, so there's going to be a whole pile of people coming in. So my replacement's going to be damn busy. So that's that's what I have for today.
Okay, any questions for Stacy? Okay, thanks, Stacy.
Thank you.
Roger.
Been in contact with CHI, Alexis Health, regarding the wheelchair lift. And now that's a new year, I called them yesterday. I've been trying to get ahold of them, finally got ahold of the person I needed to talk to yesterday, and told her that we're ready to put it in. The last amount we had gotten was thirty-nine thousand six hundred thirty-two. And we, Candy and I, had talked, and I think we added ten percent just because we know it's going to go up. And I did just this morning receive a call back from her. I'll probably get a fax today with her revised number, but I can't imagine it being, you know, like I said, more than a ten percent. Anyway, they wanted a third down before they would order any parts or start any work. And just, I guess, to get your approval that we can proceed.
Where are they from, Ken?
Bismarck.
And did they have a give you a timeline?
No, she said it would be several weeks before they could get up here, and I just said, well, that's fine. Why don't we get it done this year?
Did you have a timeline that was going to work better for you?
You know, I don't know. Well, the sooner the better, of course, but I don't know that it really makes any difference to us.
Are there no activities going down there that would?
Not that they, you know, in that stairway would would bother them. Any activities, most of that, it always didn't. They use the other stairway and whatnot. You know, from either from outside or from the gym side. I guess the only thing might be is if they happen to decide they want to do a project day, but that's probably in April, so.
Well, sooner we can get it coordinated, and I suppose the sooner they get it scheduled, we get the parts they need and they're taken care of.
I'd make a motion that we allow Roger to make a down payment so that we can get this started, and then when you have a sense for when they'll be coming up, you can just let us know.
Will do. Perfect. We have a motion, we have a second.
All second.
We have a second. Further discussion. I guess it's not a bill, but should we, we'll call it because we are going to be making a down payment? Technically, we are going to pay a bill because we want it.
Maybe the motion should be in contingence that it's not over that projected ten percent increase from our quote. We haven't gotten a quote yet.
That's true. Then, yeah, I would I'd amend it to say exactly what Kevin said, that it's we say a ten percent band of.
What do we expect? Estimate.
I just faxed them our tax exempt number before I came in here, so I'm guessing we'll probably get a fax back today.
We can do it at the next meeting, do this motion. They don't wait that long. Make sure everything's in order before we start throwing money at them.
Well, it's a decision.
How long does that, do you think that would delay the timeline, Roger?
You know, she said yesterday it was it'd be several weeks out already, so. And, you know, I can check later. I can maybe even come back. You guys may still be here if I get another quote. I come in later this morning, if you guys are still here.
They totally understand who they're dealing with up here, right? The county?
Yep, they've been here. They they were here last President's Day, February, and they measured, did their measuring, and they ran their estimates from there.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the thing, that I would assume that the number's not going to move.
Well, no, I don't think so either.
I mean, they measured it perfectly, and they know exactly what they need, and it wasn't like it was a guesstimate. I mean, it was spot on what they needed, so. Unless there's some material cost that went up slightly.
We just threw in ten percent, like I said, just because.
Okay. Further discussion. I guess we have a motion right now to pay a down payment of a third within the ten percent.
Go ahead and let Roger put it over when it gets here.
Okay.
And like I said, if I get a fax before you guys break up today, I'll come back in with it.
That'd be good. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, we will call this, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Wakefield, Tom, Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Roger?
If I can add a little bit to the 4H shooting. If you guys think you're good shots, come down February fifteenth to the air rifle tournament, and some of those kids will show you how it's done.
They're all pretty.
You don't want to get embarrassed.
Very good, very good. Okay, very good. Bethany, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome.
Hi. Jeff asked me to come this morning, just to introduce myself. My name is Bethany Hart. I am the new airport manager. Been at it now for almost a month, so getting settled in. A little bit of my background, I'm originally from Park River, North Dakota, so about an hour and a half northeast of here. I went to college at UMD. I got my bachelor's degree in airport management. People don't know that's a thing. It is. Some of my airport background, I did internships at the Denver International Airport and at the Grand Forks Airport. My internship in Grand Forks turned into a full-time position for a while after that. I also managed the airport in Warroad, Minnesota for a while. And then it was about two and a half years ago, my husband's job brought us to this area, so here we are. I've just been anxiously awaiting for John to retire, and they finally came, so here we are. And I'm really excited to be here and working at the airport and looking forward to working with you as the county commission as well. The other item I have for today is to discuss a little bit our EAS contract. What that stands for is essential air service. So this is a program that is subsidized by the government so that we are able to have the commercial air service in smaller communities like this. What that means is that when you see that United SkyWest plane out there, we are able to have that because of this funding that we get as part of the EAS contract. And that is up this year for renewal. And what happens there is the DOT works with us, and they actually put out the RFPs, and they solicit bids. We were hoping as a community that SkyWest would submit their bid and that we could continue our service. There's been a lot of positive feedback over the years. Our numbers are gradually increasing, and we hope to continue that. So I guess what we will be looking for as me as manager and our airport authority is we'll be looking for a letter of support from the county commission, and I'll work with Jeff on that, too, and kind of look. I know it's been done in the past. It was kind of the same thing, and pretty much just writing that again. We gather letters of support from the community, and then we submit those to the DOT. We don't expect any changes. SkyWest was actually the only one that submitted a bid this year, and that was all good news for us. We were happy with that. So you'll see that request coming from me here very shortly, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be.
I think SkyWest, we've been very pleased with their carrier and their services, you know, to and from Denver. And it's a fifty-passenger jet, you know, so I think people are a lot more comfortable with a jet service versus a prop-based plane. And we were seven passengers shy of seven thousand last year. So the numbers continue to go up, which is really great to see. If you have an opportunity or looking for a place to fly to, they have some really incredible deals every once in a while. At our January meeting, we were discussing, they had a round trip ticket to San Diego for, what was it, three twenty-nine or something like that, they're right in that neighborhood. And out of Devils Lake, Devils Lake has two flights daily, correct? Twelve a week?
Yeah.
Right, and and then free parking, you know, and then when you do fly back home from your vacation destination, it's a real quick trip back to your home destination instead of having to drive from one of the larger airports in our state or even regionally. So it's really a very economical way to travel, so we look forward to Bethany's.
Question for Bethany and Jeff, and welcome. It's a pleasure. I know that there is a big increase in funding at ten thousand boardings.
It's actually eight thousand. That is, well, there's.
There's another step, eight thousand, okay.
Yeah, and that is going to be our big goal here. It'd be great if we could hit it in 2020. It might take till 2021, but we are really, really shooting for the eight thousand passenger mark. You're right, there is a threshold at ten thousand as well. I don't know if we'll see that. I mean, maybe at some point in the future. Right now, we receive a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year from the FAA, and that's for the number of boardings we have now. If we were able to get up to eight thousand boardings, which is another one thousand, we would move from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to six hundred thousand dollars in funding. So that is our big, big goal here over the next year or two, because that really opens us up. The hundred and fifty thousand we get from the FAA pretty much covers stuff that they make us do. There's nothing extra. If we were to get to that six hundred thousand dollar funding mark, that opens us up to getting to do some improvements, or if we have to catch up on anything when you make these things, or just, you know, positions us better for the future, so.
And we really think that that's an attainable goal, is the eight thousand. And so we're really pushing, pushing hard for that one. And then once we hit that, then we can, you know, set up our, we will hire that ten.
Oh, no, absolutely. I mean, I agree with you that ten, I think, would be a pretty tall order, but I do think you could get a any chance that they'll let you just put people on a plane and do it once around the lake?
I wish, I know. We just start buying the planes so we can have people go somewhere. I did just get January's numbers in yesterday, and they were quite a bit higher than last year for January, so. And I I was a little concerned. I was nervous because we had that whole week of fog and bad weather, and I thought, oh, man, this is going to hurt our numbers. But we still increased for January over last year, so hopefully we'll see an increase. You know, if we see that much over every month, we will be able to get there.
Britt? Somebody told me the other day, I'm looking at that eight thousand number. It's worth a thousand shy, and the ticket's about two hundred bucks. Well, if we get his top people back in order, we'd be money ahead.
Well, one thing I'm trying to. Well, one thing I'm trying to remind people is to always check our airport first, it might surprise you, you know, like you said, we had to check those, that San Diego flight, and, um. Maybe get into people's minds, if you want a long weekend in Denver, you can usually get to Denver and back for, I think right now it's about two hundred and thirty bucks. So, I mean, that's a very affordable ticket, in my opinion, anyway, so, yeah.
And it's not necessarily just that commercial flight with Sky West, it's, it's overall passengers in and out of Devil's Lake, correct?
Yeah, if we were to add, it's something that we've possibly discussed is adding some charter flights, you know, we get the, the Frisco thing. Pretty much every year, it seems like, for the N B S U fans, and I don't think that we'll be able to get it this year because everyone is booking, but U N D does that Hall of Fame game. This coming year, it's going to be in Nashville. In the future, I wanna look towards maybe doing some charter flights, they already do them on Grand Forks and out of Fargo, you know, why not have one come out of here? It is convenient for our people around here, and also that would help our boarding numbers, they count towards that ultimate goal of eight thousand, so yeah, something we're looking for towards the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Bethany, would you, would you like us to go ahead and give, have that, uh, letter of support, um, as a motion today, or is that something that we wanna address at some later point?
I guess if it's not necessary to.
We probably should get a motion first, if you need a motion in order to write the letter, let's get the motion, because I, there's a deadline sometime in February, can't remember exactly what it is with the D O T, where they wanna receive those letters back, it is in February, so.
I would go ahead and make that motion to go ahead and lend our support to, uh, the continued E A S services, uh, of the federal government or regional airport here. And have Bethany and work with Commissioner O'Leary on to get that, that completed, and you can sign it when, when you have the verbiage to suit your needs, I guess.
Sure we can pull up the old one and it's.
Yeah, I'll bring it up.
There's the old one.
There's the old one, and the Director of Transportation, Mr. Stamen.
You're already done.
Is it addressed to Scott Falk?
Yep.
That guy.
That's why we got it. She's on top of this stuff, it's not directly. All right, further discussion on the, we had a second, correct? Motion in a second, further discussion. Seeing none, we'll vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same side. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good, thanks for coming in. Welcome.
Thank you.
What's happening, so we'll get up with that. Kevin, you're up.
Okay, first of all, we need to update our fringe county road plan, and I think I sent copies out to everyone, so. Just to review it real quick. First page is our traveling projects, and they just rotate down to the bottom as we get them finished, so. And then they move to the top is for the next year, so that's basically what I did there. Any questions on that, graveling page?
Yep, your second one there, Benson Ramsey line. Do you have a, have a left?
Well, first we need to check with Benson, I mean, we did a lot of penal work there, there's a couple miles that get used.
Oh, so you're just gonna do those few miles that are.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, it's just, just the seven miles that are used, right?
Is this where the bridge is there?
Yep.
Those bridges, that one with Tammy Tolson, that's a mile. Gets used all the time, I mean, that's how she gets her off.
Okay, any other questions on that? I was just gonna make the comment, I found it interesting, I was visiting with a camera crew the other day, and they said that, oh, each county does gravel differently, like their county, they did all the gravel in for the townships too, which I found interesting, I didn't even think about that, but. Yeah, so, they just kinda, cause they were, they were curious how often we gravel our county roads, when I was visiting with the township office.
They probably have gravel in their county.
Yeah, that's what I told them, my, my guess is that they probably have gravel in their county, cause we have to pull ours from other places, so we're very little gravel, yeah, we're kind of running ourselves out. Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions on gravel? Second page is our, our major projects. This year, we're overlaying Els drive and Ramsey County two. So, and then our blast project last year just rotated in the bottom, just like our gravel. This one, of course, goes out probably in five or six years. And just a reminder, we've, uh, switched Ramsey County three and Ramsey County two in order. So next year, two years from now, we'll be doing Ramsey County three up by Lot.
Amber Temple.
Panther.
Any questions there?
We'll still have the option too, we're gonna, uh, when we get to next year, when it's engineering time, we can kinda take a look and see if that's the part, you know, the, the order we wanna keep everything in, correct?
Yep, exactly, okay, yep. This stuff's going on our website, so it's, but yeah, we review it every year.
Yeah, we don't wanna keep shuffling, not shuffling them down the list, but you know, like we've said before, that road's pretty not in good shape compared to some of the stuff we've been doing, but just, you know, just gotta keep our eyes on the road. Okay, any further questions?
Third page is our.
The chip ceiling.
Chip ceiling, and that same thing, they will just rotate down. So this year, we'll be doing Ramsey three, and stay seventeen all the way south to Ramsey two. Twenty-one miles.
Okay.
Any question there? Now bridges. Last one's a bridge, yeah, that one's kind of, uh, this year, we plan on taking out three. Triumph Township, one thirty-four, forty-five, trying to remember where that was. It's up in the middle of the wilderness, I think, but. Don't get even much. Oh, yeah, that's where it is, yeah, that's right. And then in Harding Township, there's a wooden bridge north of, uh. Uh, the old commissioner. Anyway, it's an old wooden bridge that, that approached one of the sides where the abutments caught on fire, and it burnt a little bit, it's not. It's a weevil wall, so it's not a major part of the structure, but we're gonna take that one up, replace it too, next year. And Highland Center, there's one. Uh, just south of Ramsey nine, only mile east of the county line. It's just an old concrete bridge that's coming up on the list. And the last one we're doing is on Ramsey ten, on the town or Ramsey line, I guess it'd be east or west of, uh. You know, kind of the good road, it's kind of on a prairie, prairie trail looking thing, but they approached me two years ago about getting that one taken out, so. It's probably on their inventory list, but to save a little money, we're gonna do the work, and they're gonna, they'll pay for that, but.
Town or approached us on it.
They're gonna replace the big bridge there?
We're going to, that's what you said.
How long is it?
It's not very big, it's only maybe twenty feet long.
Yeah, I was gonna say, these are all going to culverts, right?
Yeah, exactly, yes, right.
It's been underwater?
No, not this one.
So this is something that's used for access to farmland back there?
Exactly, that's what it is.
Too narrow and can't get stuff across it very well.
Yeah.
Is that west of the curves up there?
West of the curves, yeah.
West of that first curve? Are you going west on ten, or curbs north?
Yeah, it's west of there.
West of that?
Yeah. About a mile, visually.
I would say we got plenty of work to do there.
Isn't that land out of water, how to justify that?
There is, you know, they farm, they do take their farm machinery across it now, it's, uh, it's not a very good bridge, but. It's always been on the town or county inventory, but they were looking for a way to save some money too, so. Yeah, so if we would do the work and make paper out of it.
Probably a good deal, we, uh, build county ten up then, huh?
Yeah, to a certain point, I think it goes underwater again after, yeah. That's what you're saying, build it up again.
Okay, so we got four on, that's all stalled this summer then, huh?
Yep, then we got one left last year, we.
Okay.
That's where that Triumph Bridge is, that's the one that we didn't get to last year.
Should get to.
Right. Where's the Donny Hanson?
So this is just our internal bridge inventory, uh, where does that one that we're looking at on county four fall in, that's just on the federal one then?
Yeah, that's on our federal dollars.
Okay, so this, this is, this is, this is all stuff we're gonna do locally then?
Yeah, ourselves, yeah.
Okay.
The one, the one you're talking about, south of, uh, Friggi.
Yeah, I can't remember where, can't remember where township it is.
Yeah. That's probably something that should be the bridge or big box culvert or something like that, yeah.
That's federal money.
Yep.
Yeah, that's gonna have some cost to it, it's not gonna be a forty thousand dollar.
Exactly.
Cost of culvert's a deal, so that's gonna be an expensive situation compared to this.
These townships are rare in all these projects, huh?
They will, we, we, we contacted the Triumph one, but not the, let's see, no. We're still waiting for recommendations from the, uh, State Water Commission about sizing, so.
Any idea how many, how many, uh, old bridges we're gonna be down to, I mean, we gotta be trickling down to the point where we're.
If you don't count the inundated ones, it's just those other five that are listed, so yeah, we're.
Oh, we got left that one?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, that's, it is good, yes.
We have them on schedule, the Big Car Three of them, huh, next year?
Next year, and then the other two are inundated.
Yeah. Well, another year or two, we should be, uh, should have the list all the way done, that's. It's pretty impressive when you just decide we're gonna do three a year, so it's about come up, that's what has to be done.
Those three in twenty twenty-one, they are on prairie trails, every reason even a, a four-wheeler trail in the grasses, so grass on both sides, you know, so. Those may be, we'll look at them next year, whenever, but they may, we may not even, maybe back in there, cause they never.
But talk to the, talk to the landowners to see if that's the place they take equipment, consider if it's usable or necessary.
And though, you know, with the new bridge inspections coming up, all of these being inspected for, I, I don't know what the price is gonna be, let's just say it's two or three thousand dollars. Even these ones that nobody's using will be inspected for that price.
The ones that are replaced with culverts, you're not out there inspecting them.
Right.
Say, yeah, every, every bridge we can take out is, is a cost savings, which is expensive to, to keep care of. All right.
Now, what up there in Towne County, that, they're gonna pay for part of that?
Half, I guess. They've already agreed to that. They kind of initiated it. That's why that one doesn't have a number, cause it's actually on their inventory. And before we get done, we'll, we'll use their number as our project number.
Okay, further discussion on the, on the new list. Seeing none, I suppose we need a motion to approve, approve the list now.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the road plan, for further comment, further discussion. Seeing none, we'll vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same side.
Okay, the second item is the bridge inspections that we did in November, you know, south of Church and Frey, Benson County had two, we had one. Ours is, uh, actually pretty sound, but the only comment we had was we need to take some of the dirt off the top of it as the water goes down. And we knew that dirt was there, we put it there. When we built, when they built up Ram, uh, U S Highway two, because the water was getting close, so we needed to get over the bridge, so. So as the water was down, I don't know, it might be here, now, whatever, we can take that dirt off there, it helps the load rating. But otherwise, the structure's sound. Just for information, the two Benson counties were fine also, but they have to work on the guardrails on the old Highway two eighty-one bridge before they can open it up.
So is that gonna be open then?
Yep, we don't have a road rating, a load rating, until they do some more work, some more investigation or math, or how do they do it, I don't know, to be honest, but. So we won't have a ton rating for it, but it'll be open to late traffic, like pickups.
And then are we gonna do any work on that, like the quarter mile before the bridge and quarter mile after the bridge?
It's, it's pretty squishy.
Yep. And then the next mile too is probably pretty well traveled.
Yeah, that, that, that is good traffic.
And just the truck traffic on this?
Yeah, eventually. Yep.
If the water go down more, no?
Oh, really? Uh, in fact, I think the water is gonna be put off from now, but there's actually trees growing in the middle of the road, uh, further from this out, so we have clean hot all up, but.
How far out of the water is the bridge deck right now?
The deck itself has probably got, oh, a foot and a half of cover on it, or a foot, it's pretty thick anyways, and without that there, it would be under.
Oh, without that dirt there, the bridge would be under then?
Yeah.
So there's, depending on how the spring goes, there's a chance.
Right.
Well, at the end of the day, we still had to do our due diligence to make sure the thing is in shape, I mean, that's just how it was, I mean, we didn't, can't guess where the water's gonna go.
Yeah, at this point, we're still planning to do the work, but we'll see what the flood, the.
See what happens in the spring, what we can do. Okay. Further discussion on that or questions? Okay.
All right, and next is that FEMA bill for twenty-one thousand, five eighty-one eighteen. I think there was three different errors they found, one was four dollars, one was a hundred dollars, and then the other one was a balance. Um, there's still approximately hundred and four thousand left that are accounted, so. That was stuff that they overpaid us on. So I guess, maybe we will have to pay.
To, to clarify, um, there'll be a hundred and four thousand, or there, there'll be eighty thousand?
Yeah, there'll be eighty thousand.
Guys.
There's one before now.
Right, right.
So how mu- how much longer do we have to hold on to that, depending on, so there's still things that are out there that we haven't paid on here, possibly?
No, excuse me, the balance of those are mostly for, uh, administration costs.
Yeah.
So.
But we have to wait for FEMA to tell us we can release it and take it back, basically.
Yeah, so like, boy, eight, ten, there's balances in there that we could use for.
Yeah, cause those were released now, eleven is the next one that'll be released.
They've been closed out, yes, we still got eleven and thirteen.
Like being nine years behind, huh?
Yeah, that's a busy work.
Pretty sure all the stuff from twenty-eleven is, should be taken everybody out of. Oh, but I mean, I suppose it's possible, but. Okay, so I guess we'll need a motion to, uh, pay back FEMA then.
Yeah.
I think we already have that, don't we?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, we had a motion in a second, yeah, and then discussion, okay, further discussion. Seeing none, we'll call, please.
Olson.
Aye.
Britt.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
The TriCon Water District up northeast here is looking for, uh, permission to put a water line underneath one of our culverts on a township road. Normally, we wouldn't get involved in that township road, but we actually own the right of way beyond the culvert a little ways, when we, it's a box culvert, a big box culvert. And when we put the dock box culvert in, we purchased a little bit of right of way to do the work. So now they need to go underneath our box culvert, boring, to put their water line in, so they're looking for permission to do that. I don't see a problem with it, I, I did talk to them, they said they're gonna bore it, no matter what, even if it goes out past our right of way, they're still gonna bore it, so.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
They might well underneath the culvert.
Yeah, they have to, cause there's not enough dirt on top of the culvert to put a water line.
The ditches were over twelve feet or twenty feet on the road.
I guess, I mean, it, it wouldn't matter to us as long as they're boring, you know, if they were digging, uh, it wouldn't work.
No.
But even if, he said, depending on how the water line lines up, as they get to the project, they may be beyond our culvert too, so.
Yeah, cause I mean, it's either in the ditch underneath the culvert mouth essentially, they're gonna go under, or they could go out off the ditch in the field.
Yeah.
But I suppose they, they'd have to pay, they'd have to pay somebody else for right of way then.
But we actually bought that right of way in.
But we actually bought that right away, then you built the culvert, so we.
Well, we're out, we have the right of way up from the mouth, too.
Yeah, we don't, not, the rest of the township road, we don't put right with our culvert. Yeah.
They reached in permission, and they don't have to go by right of way.
Yeah, and why is this just a water line? Okay, we need a motion. Okay, motion, second?
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion on the, uh, water line install. Seeing none, I'll pay for, we'll play saying aye.
Aye.
For same side. Motion carries.
And then is it last thing, I have, just for your information, I'm on the, get prices for a set of forklifts for a payloader. Uh, it's a quick patch type of thing, they're about eight thousand dollars roughly, I don't have prices yet, but, um, just a heads up, but I'll probably have numbers for you at the next meeting.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Alright, looks good. Onto unfinished business. Uh, Ender Insurance, uh, choosing an agent for our coverage. Off the presentation.
Oh, do you have something?
Oh, you have anything, you have anything, Paul, sorry.
I'll do. Uh, bids for going to Friday, and then there's all the usual, uh, which between the speeding, such, but, he's named River Mayo. RJ Zaberal's newer one made, but somebody else's plans, I can't remember who it was, on Strata, so we should hopefully get bids from several of them.
This Friday, November?
Yeah, that's Friday. So, numbers at the next meeting, and, um, and then update on the bridge inspections, the states, but, but on the RFP, state wide for four different regions. Um, nine firms submitted, uh, they're interviewing this week, and they're going up to get four.
So they're gonna pick one per region then?
Right.
And then that firm will do all of the bridge inspections within that region then?
Right, yeah, it's a two month, or two, or twenty-four month cycle of the fall. And then, um, like the, it'll be a lump sum for each bridge inspection and load rating and all that, and, um, the, the state will build the counties for their nineteen point seven percent of the total, so they're, they're using their federal funds to pay the cost of it, so. And that's what they did when they did it themselves, but now they're just outsourcing.
Yeah, well, they're, they're trying to speed it up a little, because they were having problems getting around to twenty-four months or something.
That, and they used to be able to do it year round, but now they, but the last few years it switched, so they had to do it during the time when those staff were busy doing construction and inspecting, so.
Makes sense, yeah.
They don't.
And can't, 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 well, we're, we're gonna get the same amount of work done.
Yep.
Okay, any questions for Paul? Okay, thanks, Paul. Okay, back to insurance agents. I don't know where to start the discussion, then, uh, maybe ask Candy what her thoughts were, the staff are the ones that are gonna have to coordinate all of this, and thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Ideas, thoughts, opinions, I guess we can, anybody can kind of chime in with a, what their thought process is on it, since we've got some time to think about it.
Okay, tell me, uh, who's been using, who we've been using?
No, this goes through Nider right now.
We've been using Bremer for our auto.
Which we just paid.
Yep, but yeah, the, the buildings have all been through Ender for fighter and tornado, which was functioned by, or ran by Ender. So now, we, we have the, I guess the options, I guess in my mind are, we can, we can package everything together with one agent, which would mean that we would go with Bremer for everything, or we can make a decision, and I guess multiple thought process on this, would be, we can, we can go on a year to year, or we can say we're going to readdress it in like two or three years, or just set a rotation again. And then we would have to make the determination, we wanna stick with one agent for everything, and then roll it to the other agent, or we wanna split it and then roll it to whatever. Or just stay with whoever we're with, and then just kind of periodically readdress, taking a look at, I guess is kind of how I've thought about it. And I know for continuity's sake, I guess from the staff, I know that you, you know, it's easier for you guys when we have one agent and you deal with them.
Yeah.
Would it, would it make more sense to have one agent for both sets of the policy then, too, so lock them together?
It would, yeah, that would be my recommendation, just to, so that when everything transfers.
Yeah, and I can see that, I can, I can see the, the sense.
Set a rotation then?
Well, I mean, we don't have to necessarily set a rotation right this minute, I mean, because if we decide we're gonna couple them for the coming year, and then, you know, I guess, because how long have we been with Bremer now on the auto side, I think?
Um, four years, five years, four years? What were your question?
Well, I was just gonna say, because I mean, this doesn't take effect on the building portion until July.
July.
So, I mean, that would be six months, basically, and then we would have to switch coverages again. So if we're gonna go with somebody on the building side of it, I guess in my opinion is if we're gonna link them together, we almost have to say we're at least gonna keep them for that year and a half before we readdress it, at least in my mind, because it doesn't make sense to have them do all the work for six months of work, or six months of premium, essentially. Because I mean, we have to have enough, I mean, we're asking them essentially, they're gonna have to come in and take a look at our premises, and they're gonna have to, you know, it's gonna be a lot of, some, some outlay, obviously, for them, and, 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 and visit, you know, paperwork and all that to get everything in line, so we have to have, I would, I would think that, say we're gonna guarantee we're gonna keep them on for a certain amount of time, basically.
And their goal, too, eventually, is to put it like January to December, not do the July one.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, I think.
Go all state.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna have to have a January start, just to make it make sense for us, I think, because that's when we do our rollover, so.
What is the premium then, roughly, you got an idea? How much money are we talking?
Well, it's not too great, it's, um.
Well, the, the premium really shouldn't change from what it's been in the past, other than there's gotta be a little bit of a margin in there for the agent, I would guess.
That is curious on how much money we're talking there.
It's not much, I think it's over ten.
Yeah, I was gonna say, a fun.
It's over ten.
I was looking at the budget last night, and I was thinking, we had, what, twenty-one thousand budgeted or something for auto insurance, and something like ninety-five hundred or something for all the building coverage, if I remember correctly.
That's, I was hoping it was out one of the shops.
Which is really incredibly, that's an incredibly affordable insurance for the amount of stuff we have around.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got shops, and we've got buildings, and courthouse, and.
Room that day, and not aggressive after this business, but.
And I think a lot of things are undervalued, a lot.
Well, and that, that's, I think that's my main concern, is I wanna make sure that we have an agent that can come in and, and do a walkover, you know, once over, and, and has the capability to say, you're undervalued here, and you're, you know, to get us in line, you know, just like they were talking about in the presentations, I mean, there's maybe one-time incidental insurance where we can maybe buy our coverage up for like a million dollars on an event or something to five or something, and it premium changes minor.
Yeah.
And it makes sense to carry that much more liability coverage, and, you know, because if you had somebody slip on the steps or something out front, if they were icy, God forbid, you know. You know, and we have staff that takes care of stuff for the world, but stuff happens.
It's probably what the states turn over to the counties to get their own insurance, and they, you know, they just, they know the county could handle a lawsuit, but, you know, could push it out, by, they want to pay those payments, so.
Well, I think it, I think it makes sense to do it locally, just because then you've got that local contact person, you know?
They don't want it.
Yeah, it's, it's worked really well for the auto insurance side of things, I mean, I don't, you know, to have that local agent that you can work with.
Well, I think, in my view, we should definitely tie the two together, um, and I also don't know that I see a whole lot of benefit in changing with frequency, we'll say. Um, so I, I would think that we should stay with whatever we decide, whoever we decide for a couple of years at least, if, you know, if not something like four years, just to.
We could add two and then just, you know, bring it back and.
Revisit?
And I think that, that would be fine for the initial go-around, for a certain.
Uh, Mark Furkey was in, uh, the building probably a week ago, um, and he said if we had questions, that his, his boss, the head of Ender, would be more than happy to come up and address the commission at any time, uh, discuss, you know, what, you know, in their opinion, we should be, uh, kind of thing, and looking at, and he said, one of the, the, one of the very important things that these, uh, agencies will have to do is go out down and physically look at these buildings, uh, taking pictures, taking measurements, making sure that we do have the proper coverage, um, for replacement, you know, I can't imagine what the replacement cost on a courthouse would be, you know, um.
You could, you could insure it, yeah.
Yeah, um.
The building. Back on the people to replace it.
Yeah, a building of this size, yeah, I mean, well, yeah, I, I wouldn't even think I'd wanna fathom a number of what it would cost, I mean, yeah, like you said, though, I mean, you probably can't insure it enough. It would be a matter of, you would get as much as you could out of the insurance, and then you'd have to go bond and build into courthouse.
But the, other than the, uh, the courthouse, you know, you have all, like Gavin mentioned, all the highway shops, you know, and they're supposed to be out there measuring those and taking pictures and knowing what, what's in the county's inventory list as far as those buildings are concerned, so.
Where do you put that, one at Edmark, Kevin, two hundred?
Uh, yeah, that's probably, we have like a hundred and fifty in our stuff, but, but our cost of replacement will probably be, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, replacement's gonna be more than.
What we have.
Years ago, plus, I mean, and it's not just, it's not just the buildings, too, it's contents.
Right.
I mean, you think about all the contents in all these buildings, I mean, it's, it's a massive amount of money that's outlayed in all of the different stuff, I mean, because yeah, like, just in this room, I mean, we've got a bunch of old chairs that are original to the building, but if the place were to burn down, you'd have to replace all that brand new. And that would not be a cheap undertaking, you know, there's just a lot of stuff that goes, yeah, so you have to have a good agent that can look over everything. Yeah, so if, if we decide we're gonna link them together, then I think we would have to at least say we're gonna go with Bremer through the end of twenty twenty-one, probably, to give them a year and a half, and then we could revisit it at the end of that year to start, decide if we wanted to start a rotation in twenty twenty-two then? Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me, I'll make that motion.
I just, I'm hoping, I just had a thought, I just had a thought.
Okay.
If we pick somebody out, and you just give them an open ticket to put whatever value they want on these buildings, and we have to pay the premium?
No, they, they bring it, they bring it back to.
Yeah.
Well, absolutely, but if we pick somebody out, okay.
But they still have to follow the guidelines.
Yeah.
Well, they can't pay a premium to replace a building.
Well, depends on.
No chance, it won't be, I mean, they're, they're, ten million dollars.
Well, I guess if I.
They won't replace this building, ten won't.
Don't, well, at the end of the day, if the, if the, if the difference, if they come back and say the building's a twenty million dollar replacement with contents or something like that, if it costs an extra ten thousand bucks a year, I think it would be short sighted, unless not to spend the extra ten thousand bucks a year to cover over it.
We're just hoping on more than ten.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, I, I think any recommendation.
I just, should we have them all free? Give us bids.
I would say.
Should we do that? On the premium?
The premium's not gonna change.
No.
I mean, the premium will change if we make any changes. Ender has the baseline cost on the premium regardless, so it's a matter of, do we wanna make changes? We're making the decision to pick someone that will then give us a recommendation off of the policy we have now, if we wanna make changes. Because, I mean, what is our coverage level right now for building replacement? I mean, if, if, if we had a catastrophic fire and we had to replace the whole thing, I mean, what kind of a check would we get? You know, do we have the place covered for ten million?
Nobody knows.
I mean, we'd have to look it up.
Have to look at the.
I think that's basically.
Put it back then, the state?
No, that's where we, that's where.
Sure, yeah.
The DIRF would have, the DIRF would have the coverage, but by having that local agent, they would look and say, you've got this much square footage, you've got this much contents, this is the cost of a new build in consultation with Ender to decide what kind of coverage level we need. And then it's up to us to decide, it's no different than, you know, when you take your, take your vehicle out, do you want full, do you want, you know, collision, or do you want just liability? We can decide the level we wanna cover at.
It's like my building, they wanted to cover the building in the quarter to south of the ground for one point six million. I said, absolutely not, absolutely not.
Yeah.
It's covered for eight hundred and fifty thousand, in case anybody who wants to take advantage of that directly.
What was the difference in premium then, can you give me a rough idea?
Between those two numbers, uh, for me, it was about three thousand a year, so, I mean, the, the one premium was thirty-four hundred, and that would have been sixty-four hundred.
I wouldn't intrude in the business at all, no, I give you a, an idea, for sure we don't pick somebody and, and come in with a, you know, run, you know.
No, well, I, I agree, yeah, we wanna make sure that we have, we have the final say, I think my thought process was always, we would pick somebody, and then we would have, have all the staff led by Candy, working to look through the policy, decide if they're, you know, through consultation with the agent we pick, uh, you know, them come on, on site, check out all the things we have, and then, draft any recommendations they think that would be beneficial to us, and then bring, and then bring them to us, and we would make those changes accordingly. Because we can't do it for this year, because we're pretty much locked in a policy, but we can make those changes for January one of next year, then.
Well, I don't know, I would retract it.
You started, I think.
Yeah, you started, I, I.
Like I said, I, I.
The chair decided I would allow the discussion.
I, I'd, uh, I'd remake the motion that, uh, we, uh, combine the, the, the DIRF representative with the auto representative, uh, until twenty twenty-one, so.
Yeah, they'll hold this through December, through December thirty-one of twenty twenty-one, we're gonna give them a year and a half with a little coverage. Okay, that's the motion, we go with Bremer through the end of twenty twenty-one then?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion. I'll, we'll call this one.
Britt?
Aye.
Holson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, the DIRF is also looking into, uh, health insurance for government agencies. I don't know how it's gonna end up, but they, they might take over all the health insurance for, rather than like Blue Cross for Shield, it'd be the DIRF. If they can get it worked out, it's a big F, but.
I was gonna say, they're gonna have to staff up, because, boy, you've gotta, you've gotta put together provider networks, and there's a lot of stuff that goes into that.
Oh, and while I was at that meeting two years ago, the, the presentation I gave, they're losing money handling work for us at Stan, so.
Now, you don't wanna get, the health insurance game isn't expansive, game.
Heard the name, it's more than all that they can, they're.
Yeah.
Next bad one, bad lesson here.
Yep. Yeah, that, uh, insurance is, the health insurance especially, is, is a tough, it's a tough thing to be in right now. Okay. Home rule discussion. Where are we at on that?
We agreed through, my understanding is we empowered a chartered, uh, committee, but we need to select that committee.
Yeah.
And I know there was some discussion the last meeting on what that committee should look like, and I had, had some thoughts, and I'm, I'm still okay with that, but we do need to formally decide.
I'll just threw all the commissioners on, and you wanna leave the other people on then, too, are they willing, yes? I know.
I, I, I.
Yeah, we haven't reached out to anyone, I guess, I haven't.
We need to reach out to them, if I know, I guess.
Yeah, we wanna make sure people.
Which ones are interested.
Yeah, would that be a place to start? Reach out to the people we had on previously, and then kind of see where we wanna go from there.
But I don't, like I said last time, I don't believe there's gonna be many, any need for many meetings.
No, I mean, I think, I think it's sort of like, we'll just have a meeting with us and whomever else we can find to, to be there, and say, I mean, is there anything in this document as it stands that is like an absolute no-go? Or that we totally missed putting into it, one of those two.
Like I said last time, we put the full commission on, and if people know that the commission's behind it.
But I'm not behind it.
One or, one or four, one or the other.
Yeah, okay.
Each commissioner has their own say, yeah.
Oh, well, you, you, you keep saying the, of the full commission, so you're gonna take a vote on who wants to be on, okay.
Whether the commission's behind it or not, should I say?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I'm not completely sold on the idea either, um, you know, one, I think a, a home rule discussion should be brought forth by a citizen, a group, and it should be led by a citizen group, it shouldn't be government. It shouldn't be government redesigning government and taking down the people. I think it's something that should be brought up from the people to the government for changes. You know, a, a government for the people, by the people kinda thing. And I don't know if I've heard from anybody from the last election that we had on the home rule charter that, oh, it's really too bad that we didn't get that accomplished, you know, I think it should be moved forward. You know, I don't know if I've heard from anybody that said, you know, hey, let's re-look at that and, and bring it to a vote. You know, and I really disagree that it should be a, a full commission that sits on that committee. I think it should be led by people that are not elected and that sit on that committee and then bring it to the commission for a vote, holding public meetings, I don't know if there should be anybody that's elected that has a vote on that committee.
We did last time, right?
We, we did that now, right? We did last time and I understand that. But I just don't know if it's, the, the other thing is that, uh, I'm not sure if this year is the right time to bring it forward with the work that's involved with the election and the staff, the things that Candy and her staff have to go through, with, with everything else on a presidential election year. Well.
There's a reason people elect us to sit in these chairs, and that's to make decisions.
Yeah.
And I'm not afraid to make decisions.
I'm not either, um, you know, I, but.
Well, they wanna involve their life and understand home rule, I, very few of them do. They wanna see what we think.
And just as inside, I actually interestingly did between, and, uh, he didn't know anything about the fact that we had empowered a charter, but he actually did have a business owner say to me, well, where, where are things at with home rule now? And it's really too bad that it didn't work.
I had a couple comments right after the election, yeah, they understood how it worked and they were disappointed. People that weren't on the committee, that were not commissioners, just everyday people. And they under, asked me why it probably didn't work. Uh, I said probably didn't take the time and people didn't take the time to understand it. And I think that's a big problem in a lot of elections, is the people don't take the time to understand the issues. This is a prime example, I mean, it's really different for a lot of people, large shared people, larger shared people. And those people are counting on the people they've elected to these positions to make the right decisions. And passing home rule is the right decision. I've been for home rule since we, since I was elected to the county commission, cause I understood what was going on right away, a long time ago. When I went to college, I understood home rule.
Well, I'm not saying that I'm not for home rule, I'm just not so much in favor of how this process is working.
Well, I'm gonna coattail after the last home rule charter we tried to pass. I don't see any need to change that whatsoever. We run it again. We were so close and I could see it could be very beneficial to this county, very beneficial in the future.
Okay.
You know, we take, we take social service. I sat on this commission, we pulled thirty-nine mils out of this county to run social service, thirty-nine mils when I first got on.
Right.
That was just mind modeling to me, Christ times fifty or whatever the evaluation was at the time. As we're taking damn near two million dollars out of the county's property tax to run social service. Now that's gone. The state's taking care of that bill, thank God. You know, for the people of this county, taxpayers. And such no reason we're not trying to push home rule through. We can, like I said, be very beneficial to Ramsey County, very beneficial. And I'll tell that to anybody.
That, that, that is one of the primary benefits, is that you, you can tap into forms of revenue that don't fall back on.
Absolutely.
On the property owners.
Right, I understand all that, um.
Your argument is essentially that we should have a committee still that's made up of, I would say, people from, not on.
Well, I think we should have them back, yeah.
I don't necessarily have an argument of that at all.
Well, I don't either.
I, I, I think the whole, the process previously was structured with, with Commissioner Wakefield and myself on it just to kinda get the process rolling so that there was somebody to run it basically. I mean, and that's, but we had, I mean, it wasn't like, we, I mean, we obviously were the ones behind the scenes when the meeting got done, working with Candy to make sure the changes got taken care of and everything was put in there. But there was a robust discussion from every single person that was sitting on that committee. It wasn't just Commissioner Wakefield like leading the show, I mean, most of the time it was, you know, we would bring something up or somebody else would bring something up and then we'd have a long discussion on it. We had some, some pretty, I mean, not long meetings, but really good discussions on a lot of different ideas. So, we weren't necessarily driving the, driving the car on it, I mean, it was, it was the whole committee and, and I think, I, I don't disagree with you though, I think it would be worthwhile to try to, if we're gonna put a committee together again, to have people from the public.
Well, man, I, I would add to that, that I actually really liked the way we did it last time, which was that the public had more votes than the courthouse did.
Yeah.
Right? And that was the one we set it up, it was five members of the public, four members of the courthouse. And so, I mean, I, I, I don't mind that idea, but, um.
What's our timeline? When do we have to decide one way or the other to get it on the ballot? If I don't?
When, when's the date the ballot's gonna go on?
Depends if you want the June or if you want the November.
We were, we're gonna have to shoot for November.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's still there.
It could be like sixty.
Plus, to be honest, I, I, I mean, I, I've never been the biggest fan of sticking measures on the Jan, on the June ballot because not as many people get to vote on that one. Most people vote on it in November, so I think it's only fair to make sure that, that most of the voters have, I mean, it's not like you don't have the chance in June, it's just generally November term is better.
The other, the other part about it is, is because it's presidential election, we really will know how the county feels.
Yeah.
You know, that is the one benefit, it's not an off, it's not an off-year election where people, if it did pass, would say, well, it would never pass if I had voted.
Yeah, and it should be, yeah, it should be really good turnout this year, it's gonna be a big presidential year.
I'm just thinking, is there time to try to put the, you know, the prior committee together and, and find out what they feel? You know, and it's worth running.
Basically.
I can't believe they won't think it's worth running, man.
Well, whoever's interested in it, I guess, yeah, I mean.
Yeah. And then still get it on the ballot, I just.
They're, they're definitely, I mean, in terms of what the state requires, they're definitely, Secretary Coach gives, uh.
What does the November ballot get put together? When, when do we have to have everything in for the November ballot? Usually right around, uh, I think we had to make the decision last time in August cause it was like a September, it's been one deadline.
Yep.
So we got some time. It's just, it would be nice if we're gonna, I guess in my opinion, and I don't know if we're gonna have the power to sit on this committee, but if, if we do want a good cross-section of the county, there's gonna be maybe hopefully some farmers or something on it. It'd be nice to get, if we're gonna look at it, to get the work done before it gets crazy in the spring and everything. Winter usually is the best time to get the stuff knocked out if we're gonna get it knocked out.
Well, I'll do it this way then. Let Lucas and Adam start it and see where we're at. See what kinda support you get in the meeting.
Okay, come back with a, uh, recommendations or, or interest from community members that are interested in sitting on it, whether it be the, the same people that you had last, last time or a completely different slate. Um, but, yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
Problem there, but I just wanna make damn sure that everybody understands.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, we could have.
The commission's behind it.
We could have Candy, we try to get, you know, talk to the people that we had on the committee, contact them, uh, and then between Lucas and myself, we think we can do that as well. See, see how many people that were on the committee previously would be interested again, cause they're well versed, obviously. And if we don't have, uh, everyone, uh, we can always go and maybe advertise if we want a couple more. Like you said, it's not, it's not gonna be a process putting it together again, it's gonna take months and months and months. We have a pretty good document in place, it's a matter of maybe tweaking a few things, having some meetings to try to get feedback from people. So, I mean, I think we have time to get it done still. If we get this, uh, since first meeting in February, so if we have in the next couple of weeks, uh, contact the people that used to be on, that were on it previously, trying to get it, so we have a good idea, maybe the second meeting in February, the first meeting in March, we could put the people on the committee and then we could do the work maybe in March and April to get it in shape then.
I don't think we're gonna motion to that.
No. So, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll talk to the people that were on the committee previously and then we can, uh, move forward from there. But that's okay if it works.
Not so much, but so we allow it, if we're thinking about doing it again, can we make a motion?
I think it'll be okay.
I think there was enough discussion on, uh, media last time.
And I may mention up it on copy time, so people know that it's something that, that, that is gonna be looked at again, it's not necessarily gonna be on the ballot, but it's something that we're gonna look at, so. Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, new business then. Approval of transfers, just the one on our desk, correct?
There's, there's pulled them, and it's, it's just to clean up the bookkeeping from nineteen.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same side. Motion carries. Home state credits.
Second.
Please, Mark Long.
I'm closer.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same side, motion carries. Is there some delegation? Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three times, crickets.
Crickets.
Crickets. Portfolios. Yeah, you can stir up.
Uh, I think you have some paperwork under your desk, both the law enforcement center and Rob, for the meeting coming up, coming in, uh, February. See y'all there?
Was there just one copy of this?
Is that a check email?
Yeah. Yeah.
This is a copy of the EAS thing, just so if you wanna look at it, I'm sorry. I thought there was, I didn't know if there was just the one copy, it's just on the, essentially, okay, okay. I just didn't make that up, I saw. No, but it just gives them information about our functions, I think, so.
Yeah, they're, they're the only ones that did.
Yeah.
Tell us a little bit about their service or jet that they're using and, uh, and that backside is the, the cost of, that the estimate.
I forgot to pass it on, so I'm sorry. Sorry, back to you.
No problem, I just, all I have and then, uh, social service, I guess, for, uh, meeting this month.
Yeah, same days, the, same days, the LAC meeting, uh, nine, we're gonna meet on the nineteenth at four o'clock, it'll be our normal meeting.
Looking to interview director.
Yeah, we advertise for candidates, we have one, one candidate that, uh, that applied and we will have, uh, interview with that candidate on the nineteenth at four o'clock.
We're gonna do that, thank you.
Yep, we're gonna do our interview on the nineteenth and then we'll, uh, we'll make a determination from there. There's, well, a conference call, the state, from a DHS, we'll have people in on the conference call too. Crystal gave us, got the questions put together from the state interview, so hopefully we'll have some decisions or, or some determinations after that meeting. Okay, that enough?
Looking forward to the nineteenth for the law enforcement center, we, we'll think about what we got to do.
Okay. Lucas?
I really, what, what was? I, I really don't have a full, full ass to report, it's all pretty, pretty much the usual with what I'm involved in.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's kinda winter, it's quiet. Yeah.
Yeah, not, not a whole lot, uh, talked with, uh, Chris quite a bit, you, you know, in, working with water and Chris worked with, uh, this state DES and some of the stuff that they're preparing for, for the spring, this, uh, spring outlook. Um, he attended that public meeting they had down in Grand Forks last week about, um, their spring preparations. You know, and I'm sure everybody saw or heard on the, on the news or the weather that, you know, the weather service, the initial, uh, lake level forecast was for potential for two to three feet increase. Uh, we're sitting, we're around fifteen or forty-nine right now, um, and so another two-foot would put us at a fifty-one. And I think there's probably a twenty-five percent or a hundred percent chance that we go to a fifty-three, so. Wild water out there, uh, for the first time in a long time, the, it, one of the things that the water, uh, weather service and DES and state water commission are looking at is the effect that unharvested corn is having on soil moisture, the retention of, um, frost levels, um, those cornfields hold a lot of, a lot of moisture. And so they're trying to work those figures into their planning process for coming up with, uh, a flood forecast. I can very easily see a, a two-foot increase with the amount of precipitation that we had leading into, uh, snowfall and, uh, where we're, where we're currently at zone. And I don't think that Kevin has any real big issues with.
Out of fifty-one, probably.
No. I, I, I think, you know, and I think we're all aware of where we went into freeze-up at and some of the water levels in those ditches and the culverts, uh, those could become a concern as things thawed and if you have your culverts that are frozen solid with, with water, where's that water that's coming down and supposed to go? Do you go out there and try to steam open those culverts or, you know, that's a very time-consuming effort, uh.
Sometimes it backfires on you.
And sometimes it backfires on you, yeah, so.
That's gonna, it's all gonna depend on how the melt comes, you know, if we get, if we get a nice slow melt, we'll be okay.
Very good this last weekend.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Settle a lot of smoke?
Yeah, you did, yeah.
If it started now and continued till.
That's the problem, is it, it was giving us the nice little, oh, it's gonna be nice, and then we get slapped in the face again, hopefully. But yeah, it's all gonna depend on, like we talked about earlier, how, how nice is the melt and if it doesn't come like overnight, we'll be okay. I mean, we're still gonna put water on the lake, but it's just a matter of, we're gonna blow a bunch of roads out in the process.
But I think on the, uh, every two, three weeks from here on out, they'll have a, another flood forecast until things start flowing. So I think the next one is, uh, right around Valentine's Day, that fourteenth time period is when the next one is. And, uh, keep on going from there, but they, they generally have boots on the ground, uh, with, uh, the water commissioner, they, what they call their snowpack survey crew, they go out and they, uh, put a probe in the snowpacks in the GPS-coordinated area, every year is the same area, so they have consistency with that. But they put a, a probe in and they test the water content in that snowpack and, and feed that information back into the flood forecast center with the weather service and, uh, they do, uh, what they call a kind of a gamma radiation flyover is and determine, try to determine water levels within the snowpack from there, so. It'll be an interesting spring.
Should be. Okay. Mark?
Everything's pretty quiet, only exception, uh, LAC's still running about seventy-five to eighty, maybe a few more, so. Numbers have been good in there. But yeah, everything else is pretty quiet.
Okay. Oh, that's seventy-five to eighty mostly local, or we got, uh?
We're getting more and more of them, yeah. Yeah, I think it's fourteen, fifteen right now, yeah.
All right, let's.
They come and go so fast, you know, one day they, they bring in seven and then they take three away and yeah, they.
That'd be a, a, a real, really.
And all those, uh, past due invoices, like the VIA, those are all been dating now, I got it wrong yesterday.
Yeah, not to, just to piggyback on that point, uh, it's kinda interesting, I was looking at, if you go onto the Department of Corrections website, you can look at all of the jail inspections, and then in the jail inspections, they have how many prisoners in the past year were brought in that were male and female, and then it has average day length stay, and it's really interesting to see how short some of the stays are. Not, not like on every prisoner, but just on the average, like between three days to fourteen, depending on your facility, on all the class ones and ins and outs and things like that, so it makes it really interesting, cause when you think, somebody's going to jail, you think, oh, they're gonna be in there for, well, no, it's, it's not a month or two, it's the average day stay, I think the longest was like fourteen days. So, I mean, it's a lot of arrest in, bond out, that kinda stuff I suppose brings the average down, but, but quite interesting. Okay, uh, from my perspective, we touched on social services at the end of the month, or the nineteenth, we got the LAC meeting. Sorry to think what else. Yeah. There's a little, I'm gonna kinda write for it too, other than just normal, normal day-to-day stuff, um, county housing board hasn't been anything crazy. We have been working with Nelson County, uh, helping to administer their, um, public housing. Now they decided that they'd like to, to go with somebody else, so our contract was up to fifteenth of January, but I think we'll be administering for them through March. So they're gonna, they're gonna go with another county, which is, fine, that's their decision. Other than that, too, we're just gonna work in there too. That's about it. Not that much more.
We had trained in on the second half of our new election equipment. It's the e-poll books. It's like a, just a laptop or not a laptop, like an iPad.
It's an iPad.
It's gonna be simple, that, huh?
Yeah, she, she showed me the mockup of it. It's really neat. It's, it's, I, I.
I can't wait.
Yeah, it's got like a little iPad screen on a stand and then, I don't know if you guys have seen it, it's got like a little place, so when they bring their ID in, you just set your ID in there and it scans the thing on the back of your ID and pulls you up right in the poll book. And then you okay all the information and then it prints off a ticket and then the worker will hand you the ticket, hand it to the next person, it'll tell you exactly what ballot you need and then they hand you your ballot. So instead, all of those books and stuff, it's all, and then, you know, the, the question, well, granted with what happened in Iowa and their carcasses and all of that stuff. Yeah, I wore it on last night, but the question always is, the question always is, will you get hacked is the main question. And all of these poll books and everything is offline. It never touches the system. The only time that those numbers ever touch the internet is when we send them into the Secretary of State, right? And then that's through a computer, but that stuff is always run through a computer that's never touched the system, so there's only one time it gets out there and it's all backed up with paper. So, I think we have a pretty good election system in North Dakota where we have everything backed up by paper and everything's always, you can, so if there's a, a question, one against the Secretary of State that doesn't look right, you can call the auditors and double-check everything, so.
You know what they're using in Iowa?
Yeah, they had some.
Private cell phones.
Yeah, uh, well, and the thing is, that's, that's, you know, that's a, a pri, a private cost to their party, so, but they, whoever developed their app, apparently, they had some huge problems with it.
Yeah, for sure. But that, you know, one of, sorry. One, one of the, one of the big ways that, that hacking occurs is the removal of registered voters, well, or go to.
That we don't, we don't have any.
You don't have to be a registered, anything, you just have to.
Sure, you're right.
Right.
If, well, you have to live here thirty days prior to.
Yeah, as long as you can, yeah, I mean, there's still all forms of, you know, if you don't have that. Well, anybody that's.
Still, there, there is.
You still have the affidavit you have to go through. There's still, if, if you can't show a valid form of, of ID, you still have to show a, a utility deal, whatever, to prove you've been here for thirty days.
If you got the ID, you don't, you don't care how long you've been here then, huh?
I'm guessing you clear the thirty days, right?
Send it through private cell, and returns, send returns while through the private cell.
Yes.
In Iowa.
And the neat thing about it too is if anyone was to, you know, get every, or, or whatever the case may be and just walk up to the table, grab an iPad and walk out the door. Within so many, within so many feet, what did I tell you, that piece was called that.
There's one, one central hub and then once it gets away from that hub, it just shuts it down.
Yeah, we call it like the mothership, because we can't remember the name of it.
They should have a shock system.
Yeah, no, like when, once they reach so many feet from that piece of equipment, it's, there's an automatic kill, so.
Yeah, there's, these, these iPads are structured, so there's nothing on them other than just, uh.
Just that.
Just that, so. It'll be interesting, but like you said, it's nice that we got the equipment out previous to the June, so that we can test it on it, make sure everything goes, no glitches, everything works okay, and then hopefully we'll have a nice. But it should make life easier for, but you're gonna have to train all the employees, but not, not all that, but it should, it's, it's pretty dummy-proof apparently.
Yeah.
So, even I could run the thing apparently. So, okay.
Kids probably can do it.
Stop by and see if Candy can show you the thing on there, it's pretty neat.
That's, that's pretty neat.
So.
You're gonna use it for June.
Uh-huh, yeah, we have a cou, we have a couple more trainings before, before the June election, so.
Well, that, the other thing we've got going for us in this county is we vote by mail so much comparatively to the other counties that I think, what, what come through on election day, probably seven hundred or a thousand? Presidential election's always more, at least, like.
Yeah, yeah, with all this new stuff, it might, you know, people might be curious.
Well, I mean, you got, you got it, you got it, come in, if you vote by mail, where's, where's your iVote sticker?
Yeah, right, right.
Well, the thing is, I mean, in our county, we generally have two thirty, two thirties to three quarters of the people vote by mail, usually. I mean, that's probably one of the higher percentages, if not the highest percentage of the state. I mean, but it's because Ramsey County adopted vote by mail really early, because it was just easier for, you know, we had two polling sites here, had more and it was just, there were so few people that voted at that, at one polling site, that just didn't make sense to everyone, well, you know, people vote by mail, which is.
Everybody's understanding what it is, it's just junk mail.
Yeah, well, it's just like anything, you get people used to the process and then it just makes sense more and it's, it's just an easy use. Uh, pretty much everybody I know in the county goes by mail. I'm probably one of the only people I know that still goes with the polls on election day, just 'cause I like to do it.
I'm there with it.
Yeah, I still like going in and filling out my ballot.
Still social hours.
Yeah, there's, well, there's something to be, it's just, I don't know, I just like going and seeing my duty that day, just makes election day feel special, I guess, so. But I can see the, the, the good part of it, vote by mail, it works really well for a lot of counties. Okay, anything else? Seeing nothing, we are adjourned.